Good morning. I'm gonna call the order this Perrysburg Board of Education Work Session on Wednesday, November first, 2023. Mr. Drew, if you would provide a few roll call, please.
Ms. Laramore.
Yes.
Ms. Eubank.
Here.
Dr. Rufford.
Here.
Mr. Pullman.
Here.
Mr. Bennington.
Here.
Do you have a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since we do have some guests here this morning, Perrysburg Schools welcomes you to the Commodore Building, and we thank you for attending this morning's Board of Education Work Session. We care about the safety of our students, staff, families, and guests. Please note that there is an exit right behind me. In case of emergency, an A E E is located just outside the cafeteria doors on the first floor. You're located at 140 East Indiana Avenue. Thank you for joining us and supporting Perrysburg Schools. Next, I need a motion to adopt the proposed agenda. You'll move.
Second.
Discussion?
Can we pull out eight point two if we can just stop there?
So we have a motion, pull out eight point two.
Second.
I don't know. You don't necessarily have to have to do. All right, so we'll hold. I would just, I would, if Sue made the, or Ray made the motion, no, he made the motion to adopt the agenda. Okay, so it's been recommended to pull eight, what was it, eight point two out, maybe. If Ray can concurs with that, then all you gotta do is then modify your motion.
Oh, yeah.
You don't have the history of heat.
Okay, so, so the motion is to adopt the agenda, which is change of eight point two, be pulled out as a separate motion.
That's separate, I didn't know that.
Okay, and then, and then Lori, you've concurred, you seconded it, so.
I will concur since this is a common pass.
Okay, that way we don't have to, that makes it simple. Perfect. Thank you for walking us through that. Okay, so we will pull out eight point two and make that nine point one, and reflect the other changes on the board items after that in a quarter minute. So if that changed, we have a first and a second. Hand roll call, please.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes.
Dr. Rufford.
Yes.
Ms. Eubank.
Yes.
Ms. Laramore.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes. Okay, item three, treasures report.
We get the proceedings and, uh, of these. I, I do the votes paper and lines that are actually built into the minutes when we're done, so that's what, sometime it takes me to catch up. Okay, treasure report. This is the season to be jolly, almost. It's actually the, uh, five-year forecast time. So what I do is I wanna go through the five-year forecast as it is today. I recognize it could change before the next board meeting. The idea is we're gonna spend some time in detail today. The board meeting will be more of a high-level summary, okay? And at this point, it's important, well, let me just kinda jump into it. So as you know.
Yes, I'm gonna remind the board members, you finance committee, so.
Yes, and there's not really been any major changes since the finance committee, but there's things looming out there that you, so as you know, how good our forecasting is, farther out you get, the more cloudy it is. Obviously, present year's pretty good, and, you know, within the biennium is generally pretty good. And just to again, a reminder why we'd have, it's statutory, right? We have twice a year, the board has to approve five-year forecast, and there's three main purposes. The main one being this conversation, right? In the end, I look at it when you, when the board votes on the forecast, it's no longer, it's not Randy's forecast, it's Perrysburg, it's other village school's forecast, right? It's your, all of our forecast. The second piece is, when we sign contracts, we have to show that we have money available to pay out the contract, whatever that is, and that's a four twelve certificate. And then, obviously, O D E and state auditor use our five-year forecast to identify at-risk districts, which unfortunately wasn't that long ago. The district was, just before the last levy passed, was in that situation. Couple of things is, this is a snapshot of this time. I reckon between now and May, things will change, and, but, I'll look at things today, and I want, and it's based on a particular set of assumptions. So the assumptions are the important part. Assumptions drive the numbers, not the other way around. So I want you to hear the assumptions I'm making, and it's a chance for you to input, say, hey, you're being too conservative, you're crazy, whatever the case may be. And I'll try to, you know, share my reasoning why I'm using those assumptions. And again, you, as you all know, state budgets on a biennium basis, we're the first year of biennium, so these two years are our best years as we know it. We'll go see if something's gonna change. And it's, again, it's always a work in progress, but if you look at my, at my, my working documents, I probably have twenty scenarios going all the time, playing with things. And then as we go into negotiations, I have more because I use, I use this as a basis for negotiations in terms of if we do this negotiation, what's the impact? Or that, right? So that's, I work as a, for me, it's a working document, it's not just twice a year. You see it in detail twice a year, but I probably in it at least times a week, so. And there's lots of stuff out there on O D E's website on five-year forecasts, and you can go back years looking at the forecasts and those kind of things. All right. Okay, so there it is. Go ahead and read the fine print on it. That's my joke for this morning.
Okay.
It's our eye exam. Okay, so, but let's, a little more serious. So I'm gonna break this down into, still a little bit hard to see, but I kinda, you know, took kinda bottom lines, revenue expenditures and stuff. So again, this year and next year are in the biennium budget, so those are two that I look most closely at because they're the most, I have most confidence in, because I have some idea of state funding. Though there is some things out there that are rattling that cage a little bit. Next thing I look at is the two years, what is our revenue versus expenses? And you'll see this year, we're forecasting a positive four point four million, but next year, a negative five point three million. That's a nine million dollar swing here going, what's going on? And, and I'll get to that. And, but then I look at cash balance, right? So how are we doing revenue versus expenses, and what's our cash balance at the end of the year? And so we end up this year a little less than twenty-one million, so then at the end of next fiscal year, closer to fifteen, which obviously is the direction that we're, I'll show you that we're fine, but not necessarily good. What's not shown here, what is shown here is this number here. This line is our current levy that expires next year, next year, right? So next November, we'll have to either, well, you can do nothing, replace it, or substitute it at this point. So that's, in that next fiscal year, that's six point six million. So if that was renewed at the current level, next year would be positive two in terms of cash flow. So we not, we don't assume levies are gonna pass above the line, but we put them down here to show what current levies do. All right, again, focusing on these two years. All right, so the next, let's talk about cash balance. So this is the cash balance before the levy of replacement over the next five years, and as you can see off year 2028, that's a negative thirty-nine million, which obviously cannot happen because the district cannot have a negative cash balance. I mean, that's, it can't. Either gonna have revenue or expenses cut to get there. So it shows that here, but we know. The next line is the levy replacement at its final funding level. So the levy that we have that's expiring, if it was just replaced at its current funding level, that's the revenue it would generate.
So at that, with it generating at that level, we would still be thirty million in?
No, no, that's, you're down in the next box, the gold one I just highlighted up there.
Oh, okay.
If that levy is replaced, you'll see we still have positive cash balance into the year. In the year 2028, we'd be down to seven point three million dollars at end of year cash balance.
Sorry, just put that.
No, no, you're fine. So again, if it was replaced as is, you know, you'll see here, second, it's, again, there's a conversation board's gonna have to have, that we'll have on our options there, but that is where we'd be if, if they would said, okay, we replace it, no new taxes, that's where we'd end up. Okay, and that, and that number right there, that negative, that seven point three million, that's better than zero or negative, but we'll see what the impact is. And the last thing in here, on the model, it has a place where it's to model new levies. So I only point that out there as I go forward, and we have these conversations, there's a method for me to model levies with the board and do what ifs and that kind of thing. But at this point, we're not assuming anything new.
We're talking operating?
Operating, general fund, right, which is, which is the bulk, you know, the bulk of our spending, you know? So, so you guys see this chart every month. I wanna point out, in two thousand twenty-one, we ended the year at about seven million dollars in cash balance. And look at the low point in that, in that year, in January, we were down to about two million dollars in cash. Still not zero, but recognize that we do two payrolls a month, and they're about two million dollars a payroll. Okay, so think about, think about twenty twenty-eight, we're gonna be more, well, I'll say, if the current trend continues, we keep adding students needing our staff, we're gonna be over two million dollars in payroll. So that's seven and a half million at the end of the year, probably means we're negative in January or February. We're gonna, we'd have to do short-term borrowing to make payroll if we didn't do anything, right? So I just, I just wanna point out that end-of-year cash balance is one thing, but doesn't tell a story because of our cash flow during the year. All right, so again, so let me, I'm gonna walk, again, we're thinking about, you've seen all these, and I got, I got animation crazy, I don't know. Anyway, so that's where we are. Let's go into why, or how I get there. I'm gonna just go through this line by line. Some lines I'll spend some more time on, and others, please, I know I get out of roll, stop and ask questions. Our biggest revenue line is our local property taxes. That's that first line. Here are the assumptions. The class one valuation increased this, by twenty-three point seven one percent. That's, that's reflected in there this year. We're, I'm assuming new construction, class one, that's residential and agriculture, a one point five two percent this year, and then about one percent continuing through the life of the forecast. Put that perspective. We're at one point three billion dollars in valuation, one percent's thirteen million. It's a lot of money in terms of individually, but one, but we're growing, but just, but when you're growing thirteen million dollars a year at one point three billion in valuation, it's a, it's a drip, right? So there, so there is increases in property taxes there because of that growth, but it's relatively small. And in class two, which is ten percent of our revenue, essentially flat growth, what we tend to see is, as valuations on the business commercial side go up, they're offset by depreciation. Okay, so that's, that's the, and, by the way, we'll back up to this. What is not in here, and this is a good question, came up after finance, Kelly had asked about House Bill one eighty-seven, I talked about it last board meeting. House Bill one eighty-seven could impact this line. Remember, that was a smoothing of property values based on sales, and I thought about including it, but the House passed it, the Senate has not referred it to committee yet. Something's gonna happen. I am confident, so I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's one eighty-seven, I don't know if it's some other at this point, so I didn't feel like I had enough information to include it at this point. Okay, so just know it's sitting, it's sitting there.
And then you say it only really for the two.
Three years. What will, what would happen is, it would, it would impact these fiscal years, and then there'd be a snapback in twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Right? So where it is written right now, it smoothes out these next three years, but, but then it all recovers in that year. And I talked to Matt Ostray a couple weeks ago, and he thinks if it happens, he can, one of the issues of it is, well, they're not the county auditors can make the tax bill adjustments fast enough. He's, you know, at this point, he can, but as it gets delayed, if it gets passed late, will impact our cash flow, because it hits us at our lowest, our lowest point.
And when do they, when do they have up to making certain decisions about?
Well. You know, they can make it anytime. The question's how do you implement it, right? Because typically on a bill, you pass it, you got ninety days, unless they pass it on an emergency basis. So the tax bills, when do they come out? January one. They're not gonna make that right now, so the question is what adjustments they made in that process.
Oh, okay.
Tom, you got anything to add on that, if you're world?
Yeah, I think that the fact that it's, you know, the Senate didn't take that quickly like they anticipated, I think signals that there are some questions about it as passed out of the House. So there might be some, you know, adjustments made, which could, you know, legislatively go back to the House, and, you know, so it's not as clear as a path as it seemed before.
And there are still some other conversations out there on the twenty mil floor, eliminating it, blah, blah, blah. That would be devastating, and I've had some conversations with some folks in Columbus. Many of us believe that's unconstitutional, but that's not stopped things before. But, but that's, that would, that would negatively impact us greater than House Bill one eighty-seven does.
Yeah, there's, there's an appetite to do something with House Bill nine, or the twenty mil floor, and also the evaluations, but there's kind of, you know, what county auditors want to do, what other government, you know, local governments want to see happen. There's a lot of tentacles attached to it, so.
So, and there's a, so I, that's the big one, right? That's our, of our, of our budget, you know, most local property taxes, a big, a big deal. The next line is tangible personal property, that's primarily public utilities. I have it pretty much staying flat, one percent growth. I don't expect pipeline or big substation or anything like that coming into the district. Our next big item is income tax. I'm, our growth has been almost five point three percents over the last five years. I'm just, I'm just putting it out four and a half percent a year, I think, in tax growth. Yeah, not, not, not really think scientific about that other than, I think, you know, the discussions about recessions are starting to go away, and I think incomes will continue to be strong at this point.
Well, hopefully it's gonna be buying houses as much as they used to either. I would think that the housing market has slowed down a little.
You know, I would thought, based on some things, it's really, but it's not slowed down, not in this, not in this area. Not, okay, our, next area is unrestricted state aid. All right, this one is a bit of, this is where the crystal ball comes into play a little bit. So obviously, we have, the state budget is what drives unrestricted state aid, okay? And so the state updated base costs this past year, it was about a twelve percent update, up, increase in base cost. As a result, result, you see the big change, ten million to twelve million from last year to this year. That's because of base cost increase. Plus, we are forecasting a one percent enrollment growth. Now, you know, in our facility plan, we're talking about two percent. I'm just, I'm just kinda hedging here on a little bit because enrollment does, it, it, it impacts our state aid in two ways, right? Because it's the number of students we get funded for, but it's also the wealth calculation, right? So if I put two percent growth in there, I'm afraid I'd overstate what our restricted, unrestricted state aid would be. So, and then the big, really the bigger assumption is in twenty twenty-six, you see the jump from twelve point seven million to fourteen point eight would be another increase in base cost, that the legislation, the next biennium goes, oh, we need to keep the fair school funding plan going, and we update the base cost again. And I've talked to a number of people, some are doing zero, some are doing six percent, everything in between. We were twelve percent this past time. I'm just hoping that we have an appetite to do it. So that, if there's a risk in here, it's, that's probably the most of the risk, so the assumptions. But I want it also to be realistic. Probably, you know, we're hoping it's not zero.
So where did, is, is that line reflective of increased student help if we go to all-day kindergarten?
Yes, yes. So in the unrestricted grants and aid, part of, like, this year from twenty-four to twenty-five, you see a slight increase. One of the reasons is because we're now getting funded for all-day kindergarten in there. Because what'll actually would've happened, look at, look what happened between twenty-six and twenty-seven. We're at four point nine, approximately million, to fourteen point four. There's a five hundred thousand dollar decrease year to year. That's because valuations go up year to year, but the base costs aren't calculated, are not recalculated, right? So you're speaking the same base costs, your enrollment goes up, but it's more costly actually to hit those students. Well, we would've seen the same thing from twenty-four to twenty-five, but because our increase in enrollment due to all-day kindergarten mitigates that impact, if that makes sense. So base costs are kept flat, but our enrollment goes up, so we're, we're gonna net a little bit more in state aid, okay? And so it's a, it's, Tom has described it very well, it's a, it's a teeter totter, right? And once, and so, the all-day kindergarten, that's where it shows up. Okay, the next is restricted state aid. That is, it's all enrollment-driven. That's the, that's, you know, gifted in there. Now, our economic disadvantage, which is like seven thousand dollars, it's not, it's immaterial. But there's other things that are on the restricted side. There are some C T E, career tech funding in there. Now, the high school piece of that, which is about thirty or forty thousand's going away, we've chosen not to keep our high school STEM programs. There's some, there's some, how should I say it? There's some bureaucracy to go with that and decided it wasn't worth it. The high schools still have the same programs, we're just not gonna do the credit. Yeah, like the junior high, for example, we get credit for the STEM and industrial, I don't know, it's called industrial arts anymore, what do we call it?
Industrial tech.
Industrial tech. Those programs, we get some state funding for, and money that those programs are used to buy equipment. Can't be used for personnel, but it can be used for equipment. And they're doing a pretty good job of, we've got a couple who like to spend money, which they should.
So to clarify, the career tech side of the STEM is going away, not the actual STEM program?
Right, just, just our filing and our.
Because of the funding, I, I mean.
And it's a curriculum, and it's a curriculum choice.
Yes.
We don't, we wanna do what we wanna do in curriculum and not be bound by, and if I'm over my skis here, Brooke and Tom, please correct me. We wanna, we wanna do the curriculum, we wanna do, not be bound by these career tech regulations.
So it's still happening, just not under the career tech umbrella?
Yeah, exactly.
I don't want people to think that they heard you say, we're gonna run a STEM at the high school, which we're not.
We're not. We're just not.
People only hear that one piece, and next thing you know, you know, we're getting a bunch of STEM gone.
Okay, so the next line is state share of local property taxes. That used to be called tax allocation. It is the discounts that people get on the property tax bill, homestead rollback, that the state makes up that difference. So that is all dependent on those discounts for reimbursements. All of our levies, except for the latest bond issue, H B I bond issue, and the current operating levy that's going away, those two don't qualify for those discounts, all the rest of them are levies do. So that's just purely based on, here's the discount locally, and the state making up that difference. And there's been some discussion, I think, earlier in the year about going after that, the state level. But you can see, that's a pretty significant chunk of money for our local taxpayers. And then the last item is all other revenue. The biggest piece of that is, is interest earnings, but it's also, it's preschool tuition, kindergarten tuition, and everything, it's all other. It really is all others. And the drop from twenty-four to twenty-five is due to tuition for all-day kindergarten, and then, you know, as our cash balances drop, we'll have less interest earnings. And I, and I've been, you know, I'm, I think interest rates are gonna drop, maybe not dramatically, but we're not gonna get five percent. We're gonna, you know, be three percent stuff, which we're, we're impacted at. That's the revenue side. Any questions on that? Am I going, I'm going too fast, but tell me. Okay. All right, the expense side, the, the, probably, and you well know, our biggest expense are personnel services. Built into the forecast a two percent base increase, and that's why I've kept that in there. We're going to negotiations with the P E A this fall. I'm sure they're gonna ask for more than two percent, but that's what's built in. There's a philosophical question there, whether or not to put zero in or two, but I would felt that was reasonable, put something in there, because chances are that the district has cash, they're gonna give something, right? Now, we'll get into this winter here, the board will have negotiate, we'll have discussions with the board on what we wanna do with negotiations, and obviously, you'll have say in, you know, on that number.
What percent would you say right now for entire staff, eighty-five percent, or that we spend out of budget for?
It's, it's in the eighties. It's, it's a, it's a large amount, you know?
For student benefits.
Yeah, you can see, your, 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 your student worth sixty-one million dollars out of a seventy-five, seventy-four million dollar budget. It's, it's, but, and that's kind of, and that's kind of misleading in a way because our paras are purchased service. So you've got, you've got ninety people who are at purchased service and not in that top line. And we, by the way, we didn't look at bringing our paras in the house, but that would cost the district another extra half million on top of that because of benefits, and there's no way Don's staff and my staff could handle another hundred, hundred people paying them, onboarding them, and all that kind of stuff.
By the folks that are, that go after paras, that manage paras, are having trouble funding paras as well, so.
So, so right now, so.
It's a very fluid group, too, at times, because there's a lot of turnover shirts because of the nature of that decision. So there'd be a continual.
So in ambition, so in, in next year's, I should've put this in here, in twenty twenty-five, we've got built into the, into that increase, a million dollars for new certified staff and two hundred thousand classified staff and no administrators. Now, that's just a bucket of money I set aside. Now, we're, we're kinda in talks now, and personnel has a chance to look at it. And, for example, we've got people getting paid out of S R. Well, there's only a box, a block of money here, and we've got priorities. What are the priorities? And the priorities is classroom first, right? Students first, so classroom teachers, I Ss, those kind of things are always first. You know, we have money, what are other things that we wanna do, set priorities on programs? So that money, that's, that's kind of a finite, we set aside, but recognize that's kind of, in some ways arbitrary. And I, I came up, that number based on adding one percent students. If you think about it, we're adding a hundred-plus students a year, that's for, that's for classroom teachers, right? Let alone you add I Ss or anything else you need to have to add on top of it. So, and at this point, there's no administrator, new administrators built into this. Now, that's, at some point in time, that's gonna be an issue, as, figure at the elementaries, we'll get six hundred-plus elementary students. We have deans supporting the principals, but at some point in time, we're gonna need, just from your volume of teacher evaluations, one person can't do it, won't be able to do it all. Again, Tom, if I, Tom Brooks, smack me if I say something.
No, I, I think if you add, you know, four hundred students in the next two years or three years, that's the size of roughly Toth Elementary. Do you have an administrator at Toth? Do you have additional custodian, you know, if you think about all the bodies that are going into the district and to properly manage it, which includes what Randy talked about, the evaluation piece, but, you know, that, that's one thing that we do a really good job of planning out where those staff numbers are needed. And I think as we look out, we also have to recognize that there's going to be administrative support for those staff numbers that, that is required as well, so.
And from a bond issue perspective, that growth is happening regardless if we have new buildings or not. So staffing is built in here to handle the growth, okay? The, that's the key, that, that's already kind of built in there. Now, whether it's in a new building or not, we'll have the same growth, right? We have trailers or a new building, you're still gonna need the same staff.
So, yeah, on that note, so you're saying that with the bond levy passing next to the project, you know about that? The, that, those numbers are built in for the new buildings?
Yeah. Now, what, twenty twenty-nine and beyond, that we're gonna, yeah, probably, we're, you know, I'm, I'm looking at probably twenty-nine, we're probably, we're gonna have to add an assistant principal or something to some of it, but.
So when it says no new administrative staff, the point is, you're gonna need a minister.
At some point in time, but right now, there's nothing.
This forecast at this time, got you.
Benefits, obviously our second biggest area, and by the way, benefits are obviously driven by wages and staff numbers, right? Because our biggest benefits are health insurance and, and retirement, by far, they're the two biggest pieces of that. This year, the health insurance premium increase built in is five percent. And that's what Don and I are essentially recommending and will bring to the board. At the board meeting is five percent increase in our health insurance premium and a ten percent increase in dental. Dental is, is minor, it's the health insurance is the big one. And that keeps us up-
Randy, excuse me, I thought it was, I thought we were-
Four and a half.
Yeah.
When you add it to that.
I just wanted to-
Yeah. It's four and a half for medical, it averages out to ten percent for everything, because the medical's the big driver there.
Still was pretty good.
But in, in future years, and this is a question that had come up after the finance committee, in future years, it's actually ten percent built in. Because we're well below the national averages on our health insurance increases. We've done, I believe the district and the employees have done a good job on the wellness side. Our claims are really good. The reason our fourth, the reason it's four and a half percent is not because of claims, it's because of inflation. Our claims rates are really good.
But claims activity, in my experience, is, is cyclical. You've got, and every three or four years, you see a pop, you see shock claims, you see whatever, they can drive that up. So I think that's smart to increase it in the out years.
You can stop having babies.
There are comments on that.
I was going to say, we need to refer you to HR directly for that comment.
You need to have a conversation with HR. So, I think in pharmacy though, and pharmacies in the, what's?
Pharmacy is built in the medical.
Okay, in the medical.
And, and, and I, and it's hard to, matter, we're trying to get solid numbers, we really think, you know, the near-site clinic really helps there. We're doing, on the, on the pharmaceutical side, Don, correct if I'm wrong, it looks like the pharmaceutical portion they do for us is break even, maybe a little bit better than national scripts, but it's very, very convenient for our employees. So that part, we don't, but the fact is, we've got this, this nice wellness, you know, Dr. Power, they're very focused on, on wellness, and we're getting very good utilization by our employees. And that's, that's a lot cheaper cost than, you know, going to our hospital-run medical practices.
Two things helped us, one is the clinic, and then the second one, that switch from express scripts to national scripts was significant savings. I mean-
We're up over quarter million, right?
It'll be close to half million in shares, so. You're seeing even STRS is leaving express scripts, those that are in retirement with STRS, is leaving express scripts, I think on the CBS. And so you think you're seeing, yeah.
No.
Yeah.
There is-
I had to explain that to my dad, that it's not CBS you're going to get your prescriptions.
There is, there is a looming issue out there in the benefit side. Now, whether or not it will get to us or not, I don't know. State teachers' retirement is asking for eighteen percent employer match. Now, they're trying to get the state to pay that. I don't see it happening in our current environment. If it happens, it's going to be pushed on the district. To put that in perspective, to go from where we are today at fourteen percent to eighteen percent on state teachers' retirement employer match, that's six hundred thousand dollars a year. Okay? So, we have no say in that, right? It's between STRS and the legislature. Legislature said, hey, STRS, keep you viable, we agree that the employer match is built to eighteen percent, add six hundred thousand dollars to that line without you having any input into it. So, that's sitting there. Now, I don't know if it's going to get traction this year, but it's, it's there. Okay, purchase services. We talked about this, the biggest driver of that is special education, and the single biggest piece of that are our pares. And that's not, and, and, please take that not as a, it's not a judgment, it's just an observation. Our pares are very, very important, they're very cost-effective, but we have kids who have needs, and many times, what is, what those needs are through, through pares.
Well, it's a compliment to the services that they do, because we'll see this district for those services.
And we have, our percentage of special needs are not below state average, but our non, severe special needs is high, that's what drives the cost. Right? So, so special education, so I don't know, and it's all based on our students, right? Because services are all based on individual students or IEPs and that kind of thing. So, I'm, I have forecasted, right, really, special education this year was bumped up, like eight percent, everything else is at four percent inflationary increases.
Randy, if I can add, I know where we secure the pares from, from Wood County, there was a meeting this last month where the other school districts in Wood County were beginning to advocate for increases in day pay because they're having difficulties, you know, securing aides like we have. So we're grateful that the board took steps last year to adjust our aides' pay. But there's probably going to be another round of, of school districts in Wood County adjusting pay because it's just very hard to, to hold and compete. The aides are, it's a, it's a challenging job, demanding job. Takes the right person, the right temperament to, to do that. And those skills are also, you know, sought after in, in other areas. So it's, it's a challenge, not only for us, but for other school districts across the state, especially Wood County.
And, and we are correct in the wrong town, we are ahead of rest of the county on pay. So, well, the rest of the county-
For now.
For now.
Right now, we are. I mean, I, I probably get at least two to three emails a month from other school districts around, asking what you're paying. You probably get the same way for this position, that position, this subs, and those. And everybody's taking those steps to increase that, to, to, you know, to stay competitive.
And again, I want to emphasize for transparency purposes, we contract for Wood County ESC. And there's a couple of reasons we're doing that. One is their insurance requirements are different than ours. If, if those pares were our employees, we would be having a lot hot, a bigger insurance bill. And of course, that's built into the cost of ESC. And the second thing is, again, adding eighty to a hundred additional people. Increase, between, like I said, between Don and I, we probably would need to add two central office staff members, which we'd rather be adding where our staff in the classrooms, not in central office.
The other thing too, you know, Randy and I have talked about this with Don, is that now, if we want to adjust the salary, we call Wood County ESC and we say we need to increase it, we need to do this. If they are brought in, they would be brought into our OC negotiating group, which any adjustments to salaries would have to be negotiated along with, you know, all the, you know, they represent all the other employees too. So it would, it would perhaps change our ability to be flexible with that. Although OC has been flexible with adjusting salaries, but we have to go through, wait for the contract to be up, and that, that would change that, I mean.
Yeah, that's a good, good point. And, and our relationship to OC, OC's leadership in this district is really, really good. I don't, I don't, Don could.
Very myself.
We've had issues, we've been able to work through them very, very well.
They're strong advocates for their, for their staff, they represent well, and they communicate well with us.
Okay, supplies, again, supplies is pretty much sort of four percent increase. We got enrollment changes, of course, inflation's impacting that. But the, the area of that is, again, one of those things, just want to point out, our capital spending out of our general fund is pretty flat. You know, four hundred thousand out of, you know, seventy-plus million is not very much. That's because the PI fund, James tries to manage all his spending, he cannot PI. We kind of reserve this for stuff that's unexpected. Now, so we've got some small increases in there. Here's the place that's going to be, if you will, going back to raise my hands next week. Bond issue doesn't pass, we will, it's not if, it's when we'll, we'll need to purchase trailers. It'll come out of this line. And right now, there's nothing built into it. So one of the things that may change from now, and I'm working with James and Brooke on enrollment, when do, when are we going to need to add trailers? We already done some work, we know the next set of trailers, the high school and one of the elementaries, Toth doesn't have any, but learn that's the right place or not, but probably, the high school right now, to put the next set of trailers in, it's going to be a million dollars. Because we're going to have to put restrooms in. So just, so that line can significantly change based on next week. And so I'm kind of waiting to see in time.
It costs to do anything.
There, there, and, and the question's when?
Yeah, million dollars.
That's, that's just for the high school, if we do, have to do an elementary trailer, it's could add on to that. And we know, we, we, high school needs them now, we're, obviously do not, and plus, remember, trailers, a million dollars for a ten-year life. They're not a building.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so.
And they come back out and-
Go back to the point I emphasized, and Randy's point, it comes out of general, comes out of-
James does not have, you know, his one point seven million, he's got to repair roofs and HVAC and parking lots and that kind of-
Yeah, levies never picked up enough finances to take care of, James needs to take care of.
Yeah.
But they do a good job of what they have, they do a good job of what they have.
Yeah, and I think it's important too, James has put together a schedule of, these are, this is scheduled to replace roofs over the next, I think, five to ten years. This is where we're replacing the schedule for asphalt parking lots. So he's very organized and looking out. He's also doing one for athletics and, and other facilities that we have. So he matches what he has with his budget to stretch that as far as he can go. So, it's very preventative, and, and our buildings reflect the great conditions that there is.
So next line I grouped together, we have, we did an energy project, that project, the household two sixty-four project matures at the end of this forecast. So like three hundred and forty thousand, you see, it's going after twenty-twenty-eight. The next line, the two hundred and fifty, that is the lighting energy project going on. I don't think it'll be that much. We're splitting the cost of that project between general fund, PI fund, and the commoner fund. There's a fund just for this building, so the enter, so the boiler upgrade, change in this building will be paid for out of that, that fund. So I don't think it'll be, be two hundred and fifty, but I just kind of have it as a placeholder at this point till we actually divide, divide it up between those three funds.
Is that by the Leavitt Commons, is that-
Yes. Leavitt's Commons tip, yeah. Don't I go too far? Maybe I didn't do it. Well, I skipped all other objects, that's, most of that are, are fees to the county auditor and county treasurer and to the state for, for collecting taxes for us, by the way. Okay, the last one, operating transfers out, that three hundred thousand, that's the money that the board moves to the severance fund every year.
Maturing staff, I like that.
Well, we have, Don, we have fifteen- We have fifteen teachers who are at, at or a year away from being able to-
And some of that also, as you know, depends on SCRS, if they come out and say they're going to lower it to thirty-three years with an unreduced benefit. Right now, if they lowered it one time to thirty-four, and the word on the street is they're going to lower it to thirty-three. And then it just depends on those people who want to, you know, jump at that and, and take that and retire, so.
Don and I are having some conversations about maturing staff, there's some things that we can do that would benefit the district financially. And I, I don't want to go into detail at this point, but-
Yeah.
We'll, we'll have something discussed, hopefully, personnel and, and the, the board here on that. Now, we, now, you know, going back to what we're talking about, personnel, remember, certified staff's our biggest thing. And we, if you look at our breakdown, and we actually provided this, but we have, yes, we have a significant chunk of maturing staff, we also have a significant chunk of young staff. Because we're hiring every year, we're, we're actually keeping our average age down because of that. Right? We're not overloaded at the top as a percentage, but we do have a large, a, a large number there.
You need that mix, you know, you need that mix to get maturity with respect to experience, younger folks who are starting out, so, it's good to learn.
Yeah, that's good to hear, because that's been a focus area for a couple of years, to fill the pipeline for development for the future, so we can roll on on that.
So again, here's where we are, next two years, you know, I'm good, obviously, the, the levy next year is huge, that sets the tone. And we'll, and my plan is, once we, you know, with the bond issue out of the way, we'll start running these iterations with the finance committee and having these conversations with the board, it's not too early to talk about. And, but at some point, we also kind of like, since the state does on some of these other, like household limited set and stuff like that, because that's going to dictate what our ask is, that could change the ask. But I wanted to do something a little bit different for you, kind of look at this differently. So if I take all five years and I pull these numbers out, so here's our beginning cash balance at the beginning of the year, where it's projected revenue, and this is with the levy replacement, no additional millage, okay? So no new taxes. Here's would be our surplus of deficit, obviously, red is deficit, here's our ending cash balance. All right? Now, it's not unusual for school districts to run deficits the way our funding works, right? But obviously, you cannot run deficits forever, you run out of cash. We carry a cash balance for one reason, is what we can do this. If we did not replace the levy, or we replaced the levy at no additional mallet, millage, but said, look, we have to balance our budget, which is, I think, a reasonable goal, what is, what would it take? And so I, I use certified FTE equivalents. You're not, this is not necessarily where you would cut, so please don't, don't go, hey, where to cut, I'm teaching staff. I'm saying that this is the equivalent, that would mean to balance in twenty-twenty-six, we'd have to cut ten positions. And this is cumulative, by the way, so don't, it's not additional. So ten, then forty-six, and then, you know, twenty-five more. So by the end of twenty, twenty-eight, we would have had to cut eighty-one equivalents to balance at that. So this is a point for, put in perspective, we're adding students, but we're going to have to, we'd have to cut. And when I, when I use staff is because, what's the biggest part of our budget? Staff. We cut all the supply budget out, and we're still not going to, it would not balance the budget, right? So it's, it's staff. So that's one way to look at this, is that when we go, when we talk about our ask of the voters, or don't ask, that's a consideration. So let me look at it a little bit differently. The expired levy is, is not, we choose not to put it on, or we, it would choose, or it doesn't pass. Obviously, we're debt spending next year, and then it's obviously, it's, it's out of hand. We still have a cash balance, but obvi, but not, not a pretty, what would that look like? By the end of twenty, by twenty-twenty-eight, we'd have cut two hundred and fifteen equivalents, so a quarter of the work, you know, workforce essentially. Or almost fifty percent of our teaching, you would cut, again, I use teaching only as a baseline, but it's good to serve, but that's, that gives you an idea of the balance that is, and the question we would have to ask ourselves, is that really feasible? And continue to educate kids?
Classroom sizes would be very dangerous at that point.
Well, we don't have, our classrooms would not be big enough. You know, you're not going to put sixty kids.
And you won't have a teacher to do that.
Yeah.
And there's no teacher that's going to say, yeah, I'm going to stay here and let's teach sixty kids.
So my point is, you know, that these numbers are large numbers to the average person, right? Large numbers for each of us individually. So that's why I kind of put it in this perspective, is that there, there's a price tag, and it, it's a choice, right? It's a choice for the community, it's a choice for the board, and I just want to try to be as transparent about this. And again, this is not a plan, so don't, you know, there would be a plan, we'll start talking about next year, when we put, if we decide to replace the levy or not replace it, what's our plan to compensate? Because you can't do nothing.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this to us now, so people can see that. Because, you know, it'll, it'll come down to, oh, scare tactics if this doesn't pass. We didn't talk about what's going to happen. Well, you're starting now, and that's, that's huge, those are huge numbers. Huge numbers, and putting it on paper so you can see what, what's actually going to happen. And that, you know, obviously, well, if it's not staffed, what's it going to be?
Well, yeah. And I think we, we place out there, oh, it releases that, hey, we've got a bond levy coming up, now we've got an operating levy, we have a PI levy. I mean, these things have an current and are ongoing, they just don't go away to fund this district. So, yeah, I keep it alive, you know, people use the T word, transparency is out there.
Well, we, I think we have to have a discussion too with, you know, you got this, what's the term? Exhaustion from levy after levy, but like the PI levy, maybe there's a better, we need to have a PI levy, maybe there's something we need to do differently with it. If the bond issue passes, we will anyway, because once our month number comes up in CPAP, then we'll have to have the half mill set aside for maintenance. But there's a way to do all that and minimizing impact on taxpayers and not exhaust, you know, having to go back to the ballot every time, but still meet everyone's needs. It's going to take some strategies and thought and, you know, thinking through things. You know, just like income tax, I looked at different income tax scenarios, and- You know, just like income tax, I looked at different income tax scenarios, and income tax is complicated because we already have an income tax. Right, and like for the bond issue, we could have done an income tax, income tax, if we've done it a quarter percent. We, well, a half percent income tax would be more than we need for the bond, a quarter to is not enough. So you, you can't go, you can't go in between and those kind of things, we have to have those kind of, those kind of conversations.
So now, this is, the levy we're talking about is the incremental one, right? And you're talking here about replacing it?
Well.
Or is there a different scenario, or we redo it?
Well, well, yeah, so we go, we go back to here, Sue, what I assumed here is, in its last year of collection, it's gonna collect about thirteen point six million, that you would, you would essentially lock it in at thirteen point six and click collecting that. That's my assumption here, it's not a new incremental levy, it's not new millage, it's just whatever we're collecting at the end of that cycle, we just continue it. It's, this is a tricky one.
We make it a permit.
It doesn't, doesn't have to be permanent, it could be five years at that level, it could be ten years at that level. The point is, whatever we do, we said, hey, this thing ends up at ten mills, we just, we'll fix some at that level, right? Or whatever we, but the, my point is, when we're collecting that amount, how, what it looks like, we have to have that conversation. Right, because it's not gonna be a direct replacement because it's an incremental, unless you want, unless the board wants to put the incremental back in there, we can certainly talk about that, which is more complicated for this analysis as well.
Well, it's kind of down to the finishing point, what works, what works, what, what do the people say yes to?
Right, and, and you look at here, and, and one of the things that's intriguing to me, we're kind of getting away from what I want to talk about, but this is at that, where it is now, let's say you, you say it's a fixed sum levy again, instead of being thirteen point six million, we just add a mill to it, make it fifteen, that might get us five or six years with a small millage increase. It kicks the can down the road until I'm close to retirement and we're all good.
No, you're matured.
What? Because maybe, you may have other thoughts before that, but, but, but those are exactly the question, those are exactly things we need to discuss and we need to model and talk about what we think is best, because at the end, the board's gonna recommend and our communities could decide what they want, right, so, and there's, and the options aren't, there are a lot of options. And, you know, so what, we just gotta figure out what.
Yeah, I find out you're talking about exhaustion in the community, it's the staff too, I mean, you guys, the boards making these decisions, year in, year out about financing schools, you still have a group of people who don't like taxes, or they know, like this, don't go to that, it's not you guys doing anything wrong, it's just you're trying to keep the school to operate. So I, I think, again, exhaustion to the board and to the staff and to the community, I get that. But when you have a great school district with enrollment increasing like we have, it takes some money.
And the only thing to think about too on these kind of things is, okay, what's the other trigger, if you don't cut, you could, let's say, if you could do this, it's gonna be negotiated, you reduce salaries.
Yeah, well, really, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, you got what I mean, but if you're looking at the, I mean, there's so much that we can talk about, but you're looking at already what, what meeting was I in last week, if I remember, but it was thirty-four percent decrease in the students in the College of Education across the country. You don't know Ohio is one of the biggest producers of educators in the country and not many stay in Ohio because of working conditions. You know, I mean, it's, it's twofold, you talk about, let's go back twenty-six, what is it, twenty-six years? How it was, you know, derelict and the way we fund schools is unconstitutional, I mean, it's just, it's, it's, you know, there's so much that goes into it that people just don't understand, and the way schools are funded and I'm allowed in property, and we could talk about this for hours.
And we will.
Hours and hours, I mean, there's so much that goes into it, you know, and it's like people don't understand the depth of, of, it's not like your house budget at your own home, you know, I mean, things, yeah, and it's just so much.
Eighteen kids for my house budget.
Yeah.
So, um. Kind of wrap up.
Chick one out, it's out, it's got its own budget.
To wrap, to wrap up my portion, you know, the key driver of enrollment growth is obviously a key of tax revenue staffing. You know, right now there are no changes in valuation, no changes in twenty oh four, but that could, that could happen. The next step, obviously, and we have, staffing and valuations are ongoing, I can tell you, Don, Tom, Brooke and I, we're, but almost every week, we're looking at what the priorities are, you know, it's gonna be a lot more requests than we have money for. And we said, we say no a lot more than we say, say yes, and it comes down to what's best for the kids. And then the other thing is just, and we already talked about this, other considerations, the bond issue will impact this and House Bill one eighty seven, so.
So staffing evaluation, staffing needs, I might hear evaluation thinking.
Oh, no, no, staffing needs, evaluation of staffing needs.
So to give you an example of that, right, we just met with Scott Best yesterday at HBI, knowing that he's gonna have probably close to nine hundred kids next year in the fifth or sixth grade. Yeah, it's gonna be close to that, probably about eight seventy-five. So we already, Scott's already worked on his schedule for, to accommodate that. And we just wanted to make sure that we were okay on the staff side, which in a sense, somebody's put together, we were able to, to look at that and started, you know, anticipating, which was good, so.
Yeah.
And here we are in, yeah, end of October.
Right, end of October, we're already anticipating.
Yeah, Scott, I, like I said, I'm very impressed with, with Scott's schedule, with, with keeping that in mind that, yes, it would be nice to add X, Y and Z, but can we do it without adding?
Adding staff.
Adding staff.
Yeah.
And still focused on experience for the kids, right, the students.
And that bubble's gonna move through too.
Well, that's my thing, my observation being in the board for the years ahead, that is the work that goes into keeping the cost down as much as possible, still make it happen, to educate our kids. And I think you all, I mean, previous and this year, we continue to do, the board keeps the cost down for our, for our community, for our taxpayer. We have still given the best bang for your buck, so.
Well, and you got other things that hang out there that we, that most people don't see, on the curriculum side, the science of reading that the governor wants to do, potentially, that could have a million dollar hit on us, if you change curriculums. Not our choice, for a million dollars, it's not gonna be funded. And that's just curriculum, that's not talking about personnel, it's actually physically changing the curriculum that we use. And then, and then mandates to pay stipends and things like that, where we did not negotiate, there's no choice.
More unfunded mandates.
And this is, this is a case where, and Schwartz Miller has been kind of keeping me up to date, because it's in the back of my mind if I have to update things, is that it's independent of school performance, right? We know our, where our performance is good, but we're, you know, you know how it is, is, you know, if you've got multiple kids, you're, you're, you're treated to the lowest common denominator, that may not be, may not right now, there's gonna be probably some pushback on it, but right now, you know, and the, and the governor want to put money out there, it's a, it's a dropping, it's a dropping bucket.
But I thought France said we were already doing this, but not with the curriculum that the governor wants us to use. Oh, well, what the governor.
We, we are. Tom, Brooke, and correct me, I think what we're doing is meeting the intent, but not necessarily the tactic that governor wants to use. Strategically, we're doing there, tactically, with the exact tools, may not be exactly.
And the last time I checked, he didn't have that education. I know where I thought it may take from, somebody who doesn't work in the field.
So, we.
Yeah, I mean, the challenge would be the timeline requirements, if it, if it becomes a mandate, just the requirements and the implementation, and that runway is going to be very short, which would be a challenge, so.
Wish they did, if they are. I might come on that.
Well, and we, we talk about, for example, this is an example where you take such, you take central office staff and you've got four elementaries that need to make this change, you've gotta have someone driving that, right? And it's, and it's, it's a lot. Yeah. That's, any other questions, so that's the board as it is now, I'll, you know, hopefully there's not any significant change with now the board meetings, but that's essentially, I'll, I'll ask if we approve it, if there's any changes, obviously, finance will hear about it and then represent the board.
Yeah, yeah, one more finance meeting before we are asked to approve this in, in November.
And I appreciate the board listening to the conversation, I think that, my experience is that most boards don't want to know that much.
Oh, really?
And I, I appreciate you, because this has been a pivot since you got on board doing this in the work sessions before we approved this, it's been nice to put the entire board in.
Literally, Sue and two other districts, I, I called the meeting, special meeting, to review the five year forecast in this kind of detail. That was not the norm in the district.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Wow, wow. See, we don't know what we don't know.
Yeah, I've seen five year forecasts, you continue to improve, impress what you do, what you show.
Yeah.
The numbers speak for themselves, and, and how you forecast, that's, you're the treasurer, you're, you're the pro. And some people could say, well, we can do this, this and this, well, guess what, you're not in that position to make that decision. It's the treasurer who recommends, the board, and the board's, you get, and they are making recommendations or changes, but I appreciate it, you know, it's like people spend at home, they can make decisions for what they want to use for their cars or phones or what have you, it's not none of my business. We just asked them to help pass the levy next week, help support our schools, so our community continues to be the A-plus community that it is, so. Appreciate everything you've done during.
And your point, I think your point is really good, and it's not just, you know, it's like working with Tom and Brooke on Donovan's staffing side, right? I mean, if, if Tom said, we really need to add X, Y and Z, it's not my place to say no on that. We will build that in there and it's the board's place to provide that, that, that direction, but I think we have, we have good conversation and on our line, which makes it a lot easier, it's not a, it's not a push, it's, it's not, not fighting each other, it's, but like, it's a, it's not just my numbers, it's basically conversations that we have.
What would you, this might put us off, but what would you say our budget, when our student has been compared to other schools in Northwest Ohio, where do we stack?
I, I'd have to, I don't know how you'd measure that, I mean, our spending per student continues, continues to be, if you look at the chart, I just looked at the other day, I should have brought it along, I think there's three districts, Wood, Moose County, spend less per pupil than, than we do. We're below the average for, for, we're kind of below the state average. You know, Anthony Wayne's a couple hundred dollars less per student, I think Otsego is like the lowest or something like that, but I don't necessarily say they're a peer, right, I mean, they're, they're not offering, just think about, think about just the offerings. That, that, that number per pupil includes orchestra, and all we do in orchestra includes AP. Now, anything we do, honors, fine art, all that fine art stuff, STEM, foreign languages, all those things are built into that that smaller school districts can't offer, because they don't have the staff, they don't have the students to offer, to justify the staff, so. You know, are there things that we do above and beyond?
CCP.
CCP.
CCP. Special education, all, all of it, yeah.
Well, CCP is mandated, but, you know, the fact is that we're able to have staff that teach in-house, that teaches CCP, that keeps our costs down, because we still have to offer it, but we pay for credit hour for our staff member versus going to the Bowlin Green or Owens or whatever is much less. Now, we're paying for that staff member out of our budget rather than paying for that faculty person on campus, but all those things come out because we do those kind of things.
Okay, thank you, keep us moving then, any other questions when you refer to?
You always look.
What's that looking straight at you? This is an unvideo, I might have been.
Looking right at you, should do it with cover. Should do it with cover.
Sorry.
All right. If the shoe fits.
All right, thank you, really. Okay, next we have the consent agenda, covering items four point one to eight point one. I will accept a motion to, or I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda. The one, Dr. Rufford?
I'll second that discussion.
Okay, Mr. Pullman, and discussion now.
The only question I have is on eight two, no, no, back up, sorry, eight one, can we cut pieces? Before they throw it away, do we need to get some sample back?
Sure, yeah.
And also, I, I don't know, I shouldn't have asked this, but for the other project, the church, for the baseball softball, the pieces that we could cut wouldn't be.
Those are worn out.
Worn out, okay, that's, that's, I figured, I'm not fair ass.
Yeah, you, you wouldn't want.
I wear shoes that are worn out because they're comfortable, that's all.
If you look at the batting cages, you would not, you would not.
I, I have to, any answer found in court, you can ask, okay, so cut the pieces.
So, and I have a question about seven one, you do, we just talked about, and I don't honestly remember where it landed. When we're hiring in these extra people to do extra things for us, like in athletics, ticket takers, all that type of thing, but they have direct relationship with students, are, are these people background checked, are, are we going through all of that? Where's, where did that land?
Yeah, so, so any, so we have a board policy that requires for volunteers and staff background checks, and we've always complied with that. We've looked at what other districts do and we're in line with other districts, we pulled a sampling of other school policies and ours was identical to Rossford and Anthony Wayne and others around us. One of the things that is a change, and, and this is something that, you know, Don caught, so we're appreciative of that, is things that are outside the district, so, so when we have a list of volunteers that we're bringing for years to the board, it's gone through that background check, and the board approves, and all those things are in place. But when the boosters hire clinicians and they're working with our students, that doesn't come through the, the board process. So that, and I shared that with the board, that this is something that Don, you know, having a kind of view of this, saying, that's an area that we could probably, you know, get more involved with to make sure that those things are happening. So Don, I don't know if you want to add, you know, this is. No, you know, with that contract with the boosters, and even I noticed when I was at the junior high as a principal, that, okay, what process are they going through in addition to what are volunteers, so we've set up basically the same thing, is they have to do the DCI FBI background check, have to be approved by the board, so that way no, no one is slipping through, you know, those cracks, you know, and everybody's going through that same process, and so I think it's, it's been, we've seen examples of what can happen and some nightmares that can happen because of it, so.
Also for our volunteer coaches, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's always been, that's never been, right.
So was that a tier, was that booster thing out there?
Is that boosters, is there being paid separately?
Through the boosters.
Through the boosters, yeah, not by the district, so that's.
But we still. Who pays for the background checks?
A lot of times the boosters will cover it.
No, I mean, just in general, somebody's like voluntary could be, you know, rest and coach, who pays for that?
That person pays for that.
That a volunteer.
The volunteer pays for it, yeah.
And, and recognize, part of the issue is quite wrong, is a lot of positions are obvious, they have required pupil activity permit. And that's included in there, it's those one positions that will require pupil activity permit that potentially.
One of the things we've been looking at too, I've been talking with the HR director, so they, they use a program called Raptor, which is, it's a system where you can just put in a social security number, it's a little bit cheaper than, than they, it still identifies any sexual offenses and those, those types, but it doesn't go as deep into like looking for a DUI or that, that kind of an offense. So we're, that's something Brooke and I have been talking about, I was looking at that program, just for our volunteers to make it less expensive for them, you know, paying to, to volunteer, it's, it's for the right reasons, but we just want to make sure that we're giving as extensive background checks as we possibly can, you know, as well.
Yeah, and like yesterday was Halloween, and in our elementary schools, we had parents coming in and helping out, signing up to be a, you know, to help out with the classroom party and things like that. We don't require a background check for those situations. You know, there, there was a parade that takes place at the elementaries, kid, people come into the building, we don't require background check for people to come into the buildings to do that, because the individuals who are in a classroom with a, you know, teacher and, and students are not typically in a one-on-one environment with a child, where they're alone, and we're a volunteer coach or, you know, somebody who's doing volunteer with the theater, they might be. Clinicians, that is one of the things Don, you know, really, you know, drove this conversation and, and the change that you're seeing here with this item on the agenda is that there are those opportunities where, I'm working with, you know, four cello players, however, you know, two of them are gone, then maybe that student is in a situation, it's a low number, so it is something that, you know. It's a low number. So it is something that, um, you know, that, that we began to, to look at. But volunteering in a booster concession situation, there is no volunteer check. Part of it is, we need folks to do those things, they're not in those positions, and it is expensive for them to do that. So we're trying to balance that, but not at the expense of student safety, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, Will Cole, please.
Dr. Rufford.
Yes.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yeah.
Ms. Flaramore.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes. Okay, consent agenda, uh, it's passed. Next, we're on to what is revised Island nine point one, Northwest Ohio Building Trades Council Project Labor Agreement Resolution. I've given a dispense with reading of the resolutions, since everybody has had that for, for a couple weeks, actually. It's the final one coming earlier this week. So for, well, I'm sorry, I've gone too far. First, I need a motion. I vote to. Mr. Pullman?
Okay.
Dr. Rufford? Now, your discussion I just had, we're gonna hang it now.
And a wonderful one.
And I'll open the floor for discussion.
Well, all right, since I was kind of the, the one that put the holdup on this, I spent some time with James and considerable time, and I'd like to put out a public thank you to Kevin Fuller, who sat down with me for over an hour, and then an hour on the phone yesterday. Actually, he and I went over this word for word yesterday, so he.
Kevin Fuller is?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin Fuller, oh.
Maybe it's a recording.
Yes, exactly. Kevin Fuller is on the Perrysburg City Council. And he's also, I don't exactly know what his magical role is at the carpenters union, but he, he carries a lot of weight, which we found out recently, so, um, he's very knowledgeable. He also ran all the research, all the legwork, to two, about four hundred pages worth of stuff for the city when the city went through this process. And as I say that, um, he was careful to note that the city does not have a PLA. They have a bidding ordinance, um, responsible bidder ordinance, uh, which is not the same as what this is. Though, his comment was, as he read through this, he says, this is really a nice, clean piece of paper. And I thought, well, there you go. And I, in, so in the third whereas, um, because what, what my big concern about this was in the beginning, was in trying to do what it's trying to do, does it automatically pretty much knock out, not necessarily non-union people, but smaller employers? And I was a little bit concerned about that. So, there are, there are times when you may not have the low bid, but you're local, and you've got the best service, and you've got all these other things. My question is, if somebody has the low bid, does that knock out all the other positives for somebody else who might be just as scotch higher? Is there any kind of negotiating room there for James and the board, or whoever gets involved with the bidding thing? That, is it automatically the lowest bidder gets it, regardless of all the other things and attributes that somebody else might offer for just a little bit more?
When, when, when you do a bid, and come up sealed bids, you put out your request or proposal, and you have criteria in there, and you could build those other criteria in your proposal. When you open the sealed bids, it becomes, you're, you're number, is, that they, are they qualified? Are they responsive? And then the lowest price? So the answer is, and it's, it's in here, it's the lowest responsive, so.
Responsive.
So that's the key, is that, you could say that, um, you know, your shop over here had the lowest bid, but they're not responsive. You cannot, but you have, you have the criteria spelled out in your, in your bid.
Okay.
But, but it is the lowest responsive, so A, B, and C are all responsive. It ends up being who's the low, who's on, who's the lowest.
So long as they have the criteria.
All their criteria are met, so it's very important in your bid packages that you spell that stuff out. You know, you could have a criteria, I'd like the owner, obviously you necessarily do that, but that could be a criteria, right? Now, they might challenge, but the point is, you've got to build that criteria upfront, so that the bidders know exactly what they're bidding for. So you're comparing apples to apples to apples.
So, did, in, I realize number four lays out all of that criteria, but is there something in there that puts more preference to our local people? That, is that where we, where we say resides any wooden, car platinum, blah, 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 all the rest of the terms? Is that where it's saying that we're putting a little bit more preference to local companies versus, say, Columbus State Union or, or else? Defines locals somewhere, I just, I just didn't explain that.
So, in the resolution that is in Board Docs, it doesn't specify, um, the, what local is. So there isn't that ability to, to do that. That was in one of the earlier drafts, however, um, I don't believe that is permissible, and that's why, um, in the final document that that was.
Is this on the final that we have right here?
The one that, the one that is posted to Board Docs is the final.
Okay.
I don't know what your, I don't know if this is documented.
This is, this is the lowest. So the one that we were.
Right, right.
Yeah, so the one that we were emailing is not.
The one that was emailed, there's lines to that portion.
Yeah.
Because that was reviewed by a legal counsel, and it was determined that that was, um, not permissible.
But that's, that's criteria that goes into RFQ, or RFP.
Right, right.
So we can put that into our, the press for bid, RFQ.
Oh.
So when you put that, what Randy was just saying, so if that's one of our criteria, that goes into the bid. So we just thought exactly what we want for the bid, so that's where we would put that in there.
And, and again, so that criteria's got to be something legal.
Right.
Right, I can't, you know.
But isn't that what number four is, is explaining what our?
This, this sets what the, you're right, Sue, this, this sets what the board is including as defining what is, um, responsible and, uh, reasonable. So, the things that are listed here, if, you know, dealing with salary, dealing with benefit package, and, you know, the, those, those things outlined in four will be part of every bid RFP that we put out there. And that is, uh, you know, for those projects that are, that allow that to happen.
Okay, yes, I understand.
Yeah, and that's the confusing part, is there are certain state programs that this agreement would not apply to.
And totally get that, because that was something that I was worried about on that too, and I saw that that was in here, so I was okay with that.
I think, I think the one thing is that, you know, the, there are, one of the things that this applies to are bids that go out for fifty thousand dollars or more. So, a, a lot of the, you know, local, you know, smaller businesses that you mentioned, concerned for, what we have found, and it's not true of, of every case, but what we have found is, a lot of those bigger jobs, they would not, they would have the kind of, um, interest in those big projects, as would a larger contractor that, that probably is used to meeting all of these requirements. So, um, you know, so, so some of those businesses, you know, are very involved here, they're in and out of the district all the time, that might not, um, be interested in submitting, or, or for the larger jobs. This wouldn't impact those that are under fifty thousand, but above fifty thousand, the board is identifying, these are the qualities that we think are important, um, for any, you know, bidder, and are evaluated, so.
Okay, so I'm, I'm still not hearing what I'm, what I want to hear. Where are we putting in this policy here? And that's another question, but I'll come back to that. Where are we putting in this PLA that we wish to put preference to local people?
Well, for me, it is, it is incorporated a bit by reference in the fifth whereas, where we refer to area standards and wage, with area standards and wages for benefits.
What number? Five, that's where I did.
And look at, uh, look at numbers, look at the seventh whereas.
Good one, yeah.
Oh.
Where is that?
Five. The board, although that required encourages participation by local contractors and members within the regional area.
Okay.
Regional areas defined usually as Wood County adjacent counties.
Because we like to, because again, I think.
By law, we can't.
We cannot say.
We're telling them, like.
Right.
Okay.
But we could put that in part of, of the package.
That we're going to give weight to.
Okay, but whereas isn't part of the, as I understood from Kevin, isn't part of the specific thing that they have to, like number four? Number four, the whereases are giving us all the, the, the background and the reasons why. Once we get to the therefore be resolved, that's the meat of it. That's what everybody's going to have to follow. By the way, the fifty thousand is what the city ended up settling for too, because I questioned that amount, but that's what the city settled on, so we're at least equal with, with the city on that. So, that's why I've, um, at the end of four, where it says, estimated percentage of local people get decided, oh, okay, that is a little bit different, isn't it? So you're saying that whole last section there of four, after field superintendent, is all of that taken out? Sorry, Tom, I didn't realize that there was a big difference between those two. Okay. All right, so since we are, so our, our only reference to local people then is, is where in the resolve? It's in the whereases, but the whereases don't really have any, have any meaning. So, is there anything in the be resolved part? Because that's the action piece that is going to let people know that we are, that we wish to, you know, if you're local, that's going to carry some weight for them.
So, in, in four, under the, you know, therefore be resolved, the action part, it, it addresses the fact that the local wage standard has to be used. So, if you're a contractor here, um, and you are a union contractor here, you're using that, those standards now. Without this policy, if you're from Dayton, Ohio, and you're a non-union contractor, you don't have to use that local wage. And you don't have to use a, an employee who has not been, you know, brought through the apprenticeship program.
Licensing program, safety training program, yeah.
Right, so, so what the local folks are saying is that gives Dayton contractor an advantage, because we have these standards, we have this wage, we ensure the safety and other benefits. And they don't. By doing this, you're now saying Dayton, when you come to bid on Perrysburg School District project over fifty thousand eligible, you need to play by the rules set locally. And that, that, um.
Even though it subtly influences more local contractors, more local businesses to come and bid on projects.
Because they're already doing, they're already operating that way.
But can't we say that the Dayton people, or out of town people, I guess, have to abide by the same rule? In the bid?
That's, that's what.
In the bid, in our, yeah.
Right, right. The question is, Sue.
Yeah. That's what I'm trying to understand. So if you're going to say that in the RFP, then.
What Sue's saying is, can we specifically name? What? What Sue's asking is, can we specifically name the counties that, that we want the work, workforce to be drawn from?
Right.
And.
To find local, yeah.
Yeah, and that, that language, you know, local preferences are not permitted to be considered for awardee. That's the legal response from our, our legal counsel, why it was.
And I understand that. I guess I was just looking like bigger picture, and, and my, trying to figure this PLA, is if we can say that in the RFP, and you can individually say that every time, why have a PLA? Like what?
I think, you know, you're asking Tom, you're asking.
Well, I'm just going to discuss with the board.
I'm looking at six, six or seven, I don't know, number four, that tells us why we need this right here. Any experience, any financial standing, facilities, equipment, any type of problems you've had with your jobs? So it kind of puts more of in the RFP, as it requires specific information you need to have in the bidder, that says, you've done all these things, you have no outstanding problem, no projects that defaulted.
But you're assuming we've had problems, you haven't heard.
Oh, I'm assuming we have problems, yeah. I think, I don't think every contract you hire has been perfect.
Another, another thing that PLA does is it puts, puts into place, um, remediation provisions for potential labor disputes, scheduling issues, cost overruns as well. So, when I hear that already, on these bigger projects, that where we go with the bigger contractors, the, the, the union contractors, why not put something else in place to provide more? I used the word guardrails before in the, in the regular reading. Guardrails for the benefit of the community, to make sure that we're also getting the things that we want out of, out of these type of projects.
It's like the cost of like limiting, limiting them. I mean, you're, you're then limiting your pool of who you can pick from if you, my understanding, like, if you're using a PLA, I mean, then you're, you're, you're the competition.
We're potentially limiting it today by bringing in the outside contractors that don't need to adhere to a regents wage standard. It works the other way.
Where does, I mean, where does it say that? We've never done this, right? I mean, this is the first time, so, I guess I'm just trying to, if this was where great, or kind of we've done it in the past, but why, besides the uproar that's happening?
I get it.
Why? I just don't like to be stronghold by, you know, the situation that's going on, so. Again, why would, why have a, the years you've been on board, why hasn't, why hasn't it been brought up? Well, we haven't had such as, I don't believe we've had this, obviously, big of a, of a building project, um, where you want to make sure that you use local labor. You also are, you know, developing an apprenticeship readiness program, where I was talking about college and career tech, you know? So you were trying to use our local students, our local labor, the people who live in the community, we know they're here. We don't have to try to find them from out of the area. I think it's responsible as a, um, community, doesn't mean that we're, um, you know, it doesn't mean that we're excluding others, but we're making a focus on, we want to use local labor and local people that know our area and know our community, and they live in our community. It's not saying that we're not open to bids, but I mean, and RFPs are legal, I mean, it doesn't, we have to take whatever comes through, that's what the, you know, and I think if you don't under, if people don't understand the actual bidding process, so while may not be in here, we can put the Wood County in the actual bid, and then we don't even, and even if it's the lowest, it may not be the most responsible, and we can reject that as well. So just because it, um, like, say you get somebody from a non-labor, and correct me if I'm wrong, and say, this could, I'm trying to explain this on the run, but if you have a non-labor contractor coming in and say, we're going to do this for, I mean, you're two million dollars under everybody else. And here comes somebody else, say, this, we're like, say, well, how are you doing this for two million dollars less? What corners are you cutting? What are you, you know, I mean, I want to see that. I'm not going to, there's obviously red flags if somebody comes in two hundred dollars under everybody else on the average. So in my head, this is just saying that as a board, we desire to look within our own community. Doesn't mean that it's one hundred percent, that's what we have to do. Or that it will happen that way. Right, but it's just saying that we recognize the importance of that. Well, I mean, I think we said that with this life project, didn't we? Didn't you say that, Randy, that we did say we, we preferred local?
Well, I mean, I think we said that with this life project, didn't we? Didn't you say that Randy? That we did say we, we preferred local. I think it's not always gonna work out that way.
Well, in this case, when we, we, we hired, we hired a contractor. They provided a bid, or they provided pricing based on state pricing to us for the project. Then our preference is for them to use local, our labor, but they, they're trying to meet that pricing. And so they got the labor they needed in order for them to deliver the project to us, the price that they quoted us. So, you know, we, we were hands off on that. This is the, you know, I've done, I've worked, that was this situation, I've worked this company a couple of times, and they've been able to use local contractor, but the, whatever their process of the bid worked out for them, because we're holding them accountable for the price, not, not the subcontractor.
Right, right.
Would, would this PLA keep us from using the consortium or if something like it would? Okay, alright. Um, so I'm looking at.
Well, I'm gonna back up. It could.
It could.
I'm not saying it will, will, because what, what has happened, the consortium and state pricing that we use for certain things, um, like that, that the vendors or contractors have said, hey, here's our pricing for this particular service or whatever. We don't know how they got to that pricing, know it was accepted, right? And if they're using pricing on, you know, labor costs that are much less than this, then yes, then that, then that puts that at risk. But like, but, but we don't necessarily know that, but reason to use the consortiums and state pricing is then we don't have to bid. Cause it's already been done for us. So that's kind of a tricky, tricky situation there. So it, it's not, it's not that simple. But unfortunately, we don't do a lot of big things that way. Buses is probably our, our biggest purchase from consortium and that's pretty obvious because it's a thing.
Okay. Okay. So Tom, the email that you sent us on the thirtieth.
Yeah.
Is, and, and your comments sent within that, is, is that the final version there? Cause I see the, that there is, that those were scratched out at the bottom in four, the counties were scratched out. So am I looking at the final version of what? What you were commenting on? Your email is titled PLA resolution and comments?
More like agenda. Yeah, I'm pulling it up. Sue, there might have been.
I apologize. I did not know that the one that was on the agenda was different than the one that was in the email, if it is.
So the only, there. I don't, it's not. The, the crossed out language with the counties is part of the email. So in four, that, that is crossed out. So that tracks.
Took that to mean it was gonna be strict, it was.
Right. Under one, it said to implement and that is scratched out in my, the email and that is reflected in the board resolution. Because I explained that we have Penta in the other school districts models that, that the trades union were contracting, or they had drafted language from TPS Washington Local, for example, that already have their own programs. We don't. So, and then the fifty thousand dollars was the only other piece. So in Ohio, Ohio just changed the law that said that government and agencies can, don't have to go out with competitive bidding up to seventy-five thousand dollars. Except school districts are at fifty thousand. So there was an interest on our part to have language that followed whatever the Ohio revised code would be. We would use that. So if it moved, that number would move with it. Um, and, and in conversations with the trades, that was rejected for a such dollar amount. So that back and forth with them, you know, this is what we want. Um, and we're at fifty thousand now. So this is a resolution, so the board has the right to change it at any time. But for this purpose, we agreed with what the RRC says today, which is fifty thousand. City agreed to fifty thousand, their actual limit now is seventy-five thousand. So that's, you know, what we were trying to avoid, but we're at that number now.
Okay, but on the, so on your email, you've got implement scratched out, but in, on this resolution, it's in.
Okay, alright.
Is that number one? Yes.
But if you go back to, but if you go back to the, I believe it's the.
Oh.
Yeah, so, so that was one, that was one piece of it that was, that was missed with that. So that's the only difference between what was emailed and what's on the agenda is the striking of the word implement. Changing it up, making it aspirational would be again.
And Tom, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that for the chance of the question like why, why a resolution, I think when legal reviewed it too, if you look at number eight, we wanted to make sure this was more clear on what that process would be, because there are other bidding policies in there and this would supersede those.
Okay, so that, remember I said I was going to come back to something? And that was, that was one of my questions. So is, is this PLA then changing what is listed for the responsive bidder in policy sixty-three twenty, do I have the right number? Yeah, sixty-three twenty.
Yes, yes.
If we're doing that and we're changing our policy, does that require a three read?
It's not, you're not changing.
It's, it's, the policy's not changing, it's a resolution that would supersede that part.
You're not changing the policy. You're saying this resolution supersedes that policy. So the policy remains except for what is spelled out in this resolution.
Isn't that changing the policy? Because if you're going to, if somebody looks at policy sixty-three twenty, it is not as inclusive as what number four is.
What we've been told with the, our, with our legal advice is that this policy would exist along with those other policies and this would supersede those policies when it comes to the, these types of bids. So that legal looked at that and said this, this functions that way to not, we asked the same question.
Okay.
We actually changed the policies to do this. We were told that the resolution, the way that this is written would not, would not require that to be changed, that this would supersede those policies and it would exist in that, you know, in that space.
So will we add, like, add anything to it then? Like sixty-three twenty point one or something?
No, this, this, this resolution would, would exist just for these circumstances that are determined, you know, decided in this resolution. Or those actions that are defined in this resolution, in my opinion. So.
Okay. That seems sketchy to me.
Well, I think according to our attorney, this is.
And I don't wanna argue with Dave, but I mean, if, if I'm looking, if I'm on the outside looking in and I'm looking up policy sixty-three twenty, this is, this is not sitting there.
How about, how about negotiating contracts, you have a contract, then you have a memorandum of understanding. That's not part of the contract.
Yeah.
That memorandum is out here until the next time you go around to negotiate contracts. Then it kind of part of the contract. So I'm not sure this is how you're reading this, but this could be, the resolution could be adapted, then eventually policy committee could perhaps begin the policy. When we go to the next. Which will be, you know, November, December, we'll be having.
If, if you want to. Nice, but this is, is because it's a resolution, which means at any point in time, it can be altered. It could be altered.
Gives you more flexibility.
Or suspended.
Or suspended. Board has that flex. Of course, the policy, there's other different requirements. This maximizes the board's flexibility.
That's always a good thing. Um, so I, I'm sorry that I had a grammar Nazi moment in, um, one, two, three, four, five, the fifth whereas. Should that not read, the board has a compelling interest in awarding construction projects. So as to ensure, instead of project so to ensure, shouldn't it be so as to ensure? Yeah, that's how I've always read that legal line before, is there's always a so as to ensure instead of, jump right in there. Just a question. I don't know what the legal ramifications of, but I've read those lines in plenty of things and it's always been a so as to, not just so to ensure. I don't know if that's important. But the, there was another one that was inconsistent, also in number four. The first paragraph.
I didn't capture what you said in the first whereas.
Okay, sorry. Uh, one, two, three, four, five. We really need to number these. Start with one, two, three, four, five. Number five. First, first line, the board has a compelling interest in awarding construction projects so as to ensure the highest standards of quality. That's how I have always read those kinds of sentences. I don't know if the as is now legally not needed or whatever, but it's, it really struck me when I read that, that the as was missing. So that was just a, a question on that one. Um, also in number four, there was an inconsistency at, towards the end of the first paragraph. And it's, I'm not looking at, looking at my notes, not really, it's actually really here. That it provides retirement benefits to its employees. Can I find it in this mess?
As a standard.
Find it in there? Okay. Um, employees as a standard part of its compensation, which is consistent with what is listed elsewhere. But the, the A is not in there. And I thought, okay, is that supposed to be in there? Okay. Um, also going back to number four. Kevin and I got kind of hung up on the retirement benefits, the health standard, health benefits and things for health benefits. Do our part, some of these sub people that, subcontractors that come in might have part-time people that work with them. Do, does that mean either they're part-time people also have to have retirement and health benefits? Do our part-time people have retirement and health benefits? That was a question that he brought up. That's not a city issue too much. But he said it could be with schools because we have a lot of part-time people. And I thought that that was a pretty good question.
But I'm understanding that we're not providing healthcare to a company that we're hiring as, is that?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Not part-time people. There's qual, there's qualifications for insurance. By law, all our people who work get contributions to retirement.
Okay.
And, and so, so does anyone, because if, I don't know if you said social security retire or not, there's always an employer match. So.
Okay. Do our part-time people have access to the law enforcement?
Well, it says provides healthcare benefits to its employees as a standard part of the compensation package. And the way that I would interpret that is we, we offer healthcare benefits to employees as a part of the compensation package. Within the compensation package, there are qualifications and eligibility standards for insurance and not getting insurance. So I'm assuming that a company would have a similar kind of thing, saying in our, and, and probably with the large contractors, I'm gonna step out of my lane for a minute, but they probably have a similar thing where if you're a part-time employee, we give you part-time benefits. As long as it's part of that compensation package that it is available versus we're gonna bring and approve and we're not gonna offer any healthcare. We're just gonna give you a straight cash salary. That, that would, you know.
Typically, it's to ensure that the, these qualifications pass down to that sub as well.
I just, I, I thought it was kind of an interesting thing that guys going on that part of the conversation because they thought, well, wait a minute. Are we bidding out jobs and, and making the highest standard for people that we're bringing in to do construction than what we do for our own employees? I thought, mm.
That's not required.
I think the compensation package, I think in that, within that, because we offer a compensation package for every, you know, school employee. But depending on their situation, their benefits range. So this wouldn't dictate that everybody has to have a hundred percent healthcare, dental, retirement benefits who's doing work here. Then I think that would be an issue. Because our compensation package doesn't require that. I mean, we don't have everybody here. A two-hour playground monitor does not have a four-hour bus driving. Whatever it is, is it eligible for certain benefits?
Okay. Alright, so one of, I think we've kind of figured out then what we do with the policy sixty-three twenty. It, it just, it really does seem like we're changing what's in there by incorporating this, whether you wanna call it a resolution or whatever.
Remember sixty-three twenty is all purchasing bidding. This is not covered in all purchasing bidding. This is particularly construction services.
Buildings, improvements.
Right. There's other things that we, we purchase and bid for that are not construction services.
That's true.
Like what, just gonna be an example.
Buses.
Oh, you mean that.
Paper.
Papers.
Kind of copiers.
Generals.
Yeah.
So I'm.
And the list goes.
I'm reading the room here in the interest of time. I am gonna.
Sorry.
Okay.
But the, because this might be part of, but we have an issue with number one, under the therefore deleting the word implement, adding the word begin. And then under the fourth whereas, an addition of the letter A as described by Sue.
I think it's the fifth whereas.
No, there's, there is a fifth one I was getting to.
Oh, I see. I never heard the fourth.
Yeah, and that is as a.
Where was it in the fourth?
This is the actual number four.
Oh, okay. I did write that down.
Yeah.
So you say the fifth whereas adding the as?
Yes.
Okay. And then fixing number one to TPN.
Delete. And then in number four, not the fourth whereas, but in the actual number four, adding the letter A.
As a standard.
As a standard. And that is in the.
So in general, as, as a resolution, if we approve this and you just reevaluate if it's working, if it's not, like. Is that, I think we can suspend this.
An action to suspend the resolution at some point in the future.
Because this isn't a time, this isn't like a, for two years, this is not, this is not, I don't see any time, huh, or like.
I particularly like, Tom, I, I feel that you heard me when, when you and I met. Because I saw a lot of that in here, so I appreciated. I appreciated hearing and seeing that in here. And I agree with Kevin, even though I, even though this looks like, I've, I've gone crazy with my red pen and my yellow highlighter and everything else.
What do you consider a clean document?
I know, I know, but it, it really, as I read it, it seemed, it seemed logical, specific, concise. and, and straightforward, something easy for people who want to put in a bid. Oh, okay, look at number four, I gotta have this, 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 and this, and this. Well, this might be a problem, I'm not gonna do it, oh, no, you might lose the bid then. It, it laid out clear directions for bidders and for us to be reviewing the bids. And, and it doesn't exclude people locally or distance-wise. I, there were a lot of things about this that I liked, and it was, it was hard for me to get there, but I appreciate being heard. And I think this, I think this looks good, and I'm willing to try it.
Very good. I'm gonna call to the question now, thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Brewer.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes.
Dr. Rufford.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yeah.
Ms. Laramore.
Yes.
Mr. Beddington.
Yes, resolution carries. That takes us to our final agenda item, given the hour, what I hope is a very brief board discussion on any other topics that are good in the group.
Yes, guys, I hope you got your, your OSBA journal that came in the mail. I hope you got your capital conference information with all of your things in there. There's been questions before that people haven't gotten at. You should have also received your email for your tag, for your, what do you call it? Maybe your, do yourself a favor, print those out at home, rather than burdening everybody down there. Sometimes it doesn't work. One thing that, wait a minute, I gotta get all this other stuff out of here. One of the things that did not get emailed to me was the, all the package for the, the delegate assembly, and that was supposedly sent out back in September, but I never got it. So I did a crash course on it, and it was very, very minor compared to last year. There were a couple of things that I questioned on lines 282 and 283, this went up to 1,900. It didn't talk about, and I'm, I'm not gonna go into the platform or anything, but it didn't talk about that required training included the sunshine law or the ethics training. And I thought, is that something that as a board, you would want me to check and see if that is listed somewhere else? If it's already in ORC, if it's, it was not listed in the platform. And it seemed like a glaring omission to me that it wasn't being required. Would you like me to take that and see what I would need to do to bring that up on the floor?
That'd be great, as our legislative lead, I'm always happy to defer to you on that stuff.
Okay, all right. So I will start working on that, because there's a, there's a process. And again, I apologize that I did not get the email. I'm certainly glad I hunted, I was talking to Merkoba at the Northwest Region on that. There was another one that was in 379 and 382, where there're talk, there's been talk at the state to make school board elections partisan and to make the terms two years. Also glaringly omitted in that particular area of the platform where they're talking about it. Would you want me to bring that up and find out what they're doing about that? And if I need to bring up a motion on the floor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so there is talk at the State House of making school board elections partisan, like what they did with some of the judges.
Yeah.
In essence, they are supposed to be an independent race, but also to make the terms two years, which I think is nuts. But that's, that's my opinion. But if that is something that was omitted from the platform for them to be considering, do you want me to consider putting that? Okay, all right, I won't dig on that, and-
How many schools in Northwest Ohio are partisan, is it nonpartisan, Board of Education?
Oh, all right, well, they're supposed to all be nonpartisan. Oh, there was a resolution that was brought forward, 2023.5, from Brooklyn City Schools. And I wanted you to know, it did not pass muster, it did not get out of committee. And it was about protecting kids' data collection and also exposure to porn media. That did not pass out of committee. And it might be a knee-jerk reaction from our perspective that that should have been in there, but I think from the way I read the resolution as it was presented, that you can't define porn. You know, what's porn to one person could be okay to another person, and I think, I, I believe that that's why the committee did not allow that to come to the floor. So you gave me the information that I need, and I can get this done before we go down there, but I don't think we will have to delay. Our dinner plan's waiting on me to get out of a five-hour meeting again. This looks pretty straightforward.
Well, we're starting, so.
I think you should, just go ahead, don't worry about it. All right, but thank you.
Thank you.
And if you have forgotten this stuff, be sure to let me know so that I can get you connected.
Um, what did she do here?
So moved, and you looked at me.
I was more to the layer. Miss Eubank, Mrs. Eubank. End roll call, please.
Ms. Laramore.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yeah.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes.
Mr. Beddington.
Yes.